For which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please remain standing for a moment of silence for the men and women of our armed services and those we lost to COVID-19. Thank you. At that eyesight. The notice requirements of the Open Publics Meeting Act of the State of New Jersey have been satisfied by the inclusion of the date, time, and place of this meeting and the notice of regular meetings adopted by this board on January 6th, 2020. Such schedule and notice of meetings is posted at the Minnesota Building, the Mount Olive Library. The Board of Education offices in the six schools was submitted to the Daily Record for publication on January 10th, 2020, and was filed with the Clerk of Mount Olive Township on January 7th, 2020. Roll call in.
Mrs. Aquino?
Here.
Dr. Gales?
Here.
Mr. Kemna?
Here.
Mrs. Weimat? Mr. Petrie?
Here.
Mr. Robinson?
Here.
Mr. Stevens? Mr. Strelachi?
Here.
Dr. Giordano?
Here. Let the record stand that Mr. Stevens had emailed saying he couldn't make the meeting tonight and we're trying to get Ms. Weimat on remote.
Yes, thank you.
Dr. Gales, would you move the approval of minutes?
Yes, sir. I'd like to make a motion to approve the October 12, 2020 minutes. Action item 2.1.
Second.
Questions or comments from the board? Seeing none, roll call in.
Mrs. Aquino?
Yes.
Dr. Gales?
Yes.
Mr. Kemna?
Yes.
Mrs. Weimat?
Yes.
Mr. Petrie?
Abstain.
Mr. Robinson?
Yes.
Mr. Strelachi?
Yes.
Dr. Giordano?
Yes. Communications petitions from the superintendent?
None at this time.
Board members? Seeing none, moving right along. Reports and discussions. Superintendent's report?
Thank you, Dr. President. A couple of things. Number one, want to thank everyone for their patience with us last week during the internet outage, which was extremely painful on an emotional level, also on a physical level for those of us who were up without sleep during those days. I want to give special recognition to Ryan Fiedler, who's with us. He went without sleep for hours and hours. On Wednesday, he looked like, it was unbelievable. And also Jim Neglia. And it was just an all hands on deck, but we got back up. The board will get a full postmortem in the next couple of weeks. We did file an insurance claim. The quick and dirty of it was that there were two power outages that Saturday and that Sunday. When the power came back on on Sunday, a huge surge came through. It actually damaged our panel, knocked out our fire pump, and then went through our entire network at the data center and blew out our first fabric switch. And we actually have a redundant fabric switch. So it damaged the software on the first fabric switch and damaged the hardware on the second fabric switch, and then did some other server damage as well. But with the help of the Cisco engineers, and we have, you know, a variety of products. So we had Cisco engineers working at one point in time. We had Dell engineers working at one point in time. And Ryan and Jim got us up and functioning with the guest network, and now we're back to full functionality. So we'll do a full debrief on that and what steps we can take to mitigate something like that in the future. But it truly was, you know, getting stung by a bee while getting eaten by a shark, while getting struck by lightning, and winning the lottery all at the same time. It was pretty ridiculous how it happened. But once again, everyone, you know, rose to the occasion. I cannot say enough how much I appreciate the teachers who immediately and just totally switched over to doing a combination of synchronous and asynchronous learning for the students, just went along with everything, and the parents and the students who were lovely and so cooperative. So thank you to everyone, and I think that's a tribute to the community that we have, that we can roll with the punches and deal with difficult situations and get through it together and come out on the other end all happy with one another. So thank you, everyone with that. Staffing update. We're at about 50% of the staff who are out due to leaves or accommodations will be returning, and we anticipate some more coming back as well. Ms. Marcus has done a phenomenal job managing all of that. On any given day, though, that's a moving target because we have staff return and then we have staff who go out for quarantine. On any given day, we have five to eight staff members who are on quarantine for a variety of reasons, which complicates things and makes things difficult. Some other things. Tomorrow, if you affirm my recommendation for activities, we will return to in-person, on-campus activities at the middle school and the high school. Athletics has been doing extremely well. Our teams have been competitive. Football's undefeated. Soccer and field hockey have been kicking butt, and they've just been doing a fantastic job, and I appreciate all of the athletes and the coaches who've been doing that. As we discussed in business and during our last meeting, we are able to, actually, we didn't discuss that the last meeting, it was on the way home from our last meeting that the executive order changed, and I did provide the board with an update on this. But we are now able to rent the dome. There are strict restrictions on it. We are working with the Department of Health. Our good counsel here has given us updated opinions on that. So we will be able to have the dome open for some activities. Not only that, I think we're going to be able to make up some revenue because a lot of tournaments that were usually, lacrosse and soccer tournaments that were usually out of state in places like Delaware and Maryland, they're now scrambling because of quarantine to look for locations. So we're getting requests for our facilities. And so, starting around November 8th or so, when football wraps up, our facility is going to be rented out, and I think that's really good to make up for the fact that we had some lost revenue to all that. I'll never forget, the last question in my interview was asked by Bill about what was the technology that I thought would be the next frontier. And we talked about, you know, XR, essentially the blending of augmented reality and virtual reality. The anatomage room is all set up now at the high school with our anatomage tables. So I'd like to have a tour for the board to see that. And then also Z-Space is now here at the middle school. So we have XR at the middle school, and we have XR at the high school, and our students are going to be able to take advantage of that in the coming weeks. When it comes to middle school and high school schedule, it is our aspiration, knock on wood, if nothing goes wrong with COVID, to return to a fuller day schedule for the middle school and the high school, starting on November 16th. And how we're able to make that possible, parents indicated actually there's an increase in students who are going to be going fully virtual for the second marking period. So that reduces the number of students who are in school. So we're probably going to be able to do the social distancing that we need to do so we'll be able to serve lunch. So like I said, that's our aspiration. We're still tweaking that a little bit. And then, the last thing I wanted to say, I wanted to thank everyone's, actually, there's two things. Our COVID dashboard is on our reentry plan site. Please take a look at that. It tracks if we have positive cases and also shows you the exact communication. Since September 1st, we've only had three isolated cases. Three isolated cases, which have not resulted in us having to close school or anything like that. There's the decision tree from the Department of Health, which is about two cases in a class or a cohort. We have not had that. The most recent one was at the high school, which has resulted into the quarantining of the cross-country team until next Wednesday. But once again, these are isolated incidents. And the last thing, I want to thank the entire community, and particularly the board's support for so many initiatives that have resulted in us being ranked the highest the district has ever been ranked by Niche.com, number 31 in the state of New Jersey, and way above a whole bunch of other Morris County districts, including Randolph, Madison. And we're in the top 2.8% of all districts in the country with an A-plus rating. So only the top 3% get the A-plus rating. We got the A-plus rating, and that is, you know, a direct result of the board's investment in programming, in technology, in our AP program in particular, in our response intervention program, which is a rising tide that lifts all boats, and particularly our attention to our graduates. So I want to thank the board and I want to thank the entire community's support and our amazing staff who made that a reality. And I think that's a great, great point of pride, and I'll be ending on that.
Thank you for that very thorough superintendent's report, Dr. Zawiki.
Sorry it was so long.
Any questions from the board? Seeing none, I'll move to the Personnel Committee report, and I'll be pretty sure because Dr. Zawiki and his superintendent's report went over everything we went over in the meeting. But we did discuss staffing update. Dr. Zawiki, as he stated, 50% of staff coming back. Some staff who are coming back are requesting accommodations. That is being reviewed by Ms. Harrington Marcus, our board attorney, and our school physician. So we will keep it updated. The consensus is that our staffing will be fluid throughout the year. For instance, some school districts next to us are going virtual for two weeks. Some of our staff members live in that town. They're going to put in for those accommodations to work virtually from home per the law with the COVID. So that's going to be in flux. So we may be losing some and gaining some, so that's where we're going to stand. So we'll continually give the board updates on our staffing, not concerns, issues throughout the year. And it's not just Mount Olive. Every district in the state of New Jersey is coping with this. We already have staffing shortage to begin with. On top of it, you put COVID-19 involved, and everyone's scrambling to cover classes to bring their kids back in, and it's getting, it's only going to get worse. Of note, because of that, on 7.13, if the board notices, we have an English teacher. Normally, we adhere to the step one unless it is something we cannot find or someone we cannot hire, usually a physics teacher, someone of specialty of that, not so much the humanities. But in this case, being that we're on COVID-19, we had to, Dr. Zawiki, on the recommendation of Mr. Moore, to Ms. Marcus is recommending step four, hire MA. It's a little bit higher than what we normally use, used to hire people at, but in this case, the committee did speak to Dr. Zawiki and said, you know, we want to try to get the best people we can in there. We know, we're looking at some of the resumes, some of them, you know, are fillers. So, but in this case, it was a hard time finding this. I think they had been looking for about, what, about a month or two, give or take, if not longer.
Actually, since the summer.
Since the summer. So that'll be on there in case anyone has questions about that. And then we have to go and exec sessions to discuss personnel, and that is all we spoke about. Mr. Kemna? I'm sorry, it was myself, Mr. Kemna, Dr. Zawiki, Ms. Harrington Marcus, Mr. Petrie at that meeting. Did I miss anything? Any questions or comments from the board? Seeing none? Curriculum and Technology Committee report, they did not meet. Finance and Operations, Mr. Kemna?
Did not meet.
Policy and Governance, Mr. Strelachi?
Yes, we have 17, there's 15 policies this evening. We have four new ones. Seizure Action Plan, Electronic Funds Transfer, Remote Learning Option for Families, and Restart Recovery. All the rest are revised, and all of these anyhow are mandated. First reading tonight.
Any questions or comments from the board?
Just one, Dr. Giordano. Policy 2464, which is action item 9.9, which is the gifted and talented students. I know that back in 2018-19, there was an initiative to revamp our gifted and talented. At some point, I know that in the professional development, we're going to see, we see an action item for a staff member to attend a gifted and talented virtual workshop. So at some point in the near future, can we get an update on where we stand with the work that was started back in 2018-19 regarding revamping the gifted and talented program?
Gladly. And we're actually looking to make a few more tweaks at the middle school. Mr. Stansberry and I actually met about that last week. So looking to add some programming with it and moving more and more closely to an actual school-wide enrichment model, which is our plan. But we did submit everything to the state already as per what was updated in the statute and are compliant with all the new updates.
Can we, so in the December board meeting, that working session, will you give a little update on that one?
Sure, absolutely.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments from the board? Seeing none, moving right along to Subcommittee Liaison Reports. Anybody?
I did attend the Virtual CMS SCA meeting on October 13th, and they discussed some of their fundraising activities and ideas. Considering that we are still in the COVID restrictions, it makes it a little difficult to be as creative as they'd like, but they are still working on opportunities to raise funds for students at CMS. And in addition to that, they discussed some of their officers and roles and responsibilities for the upcoming year.
That's it? Questions and comments from the board, Mr. Strelachi?
Yeah, the Flanders PTA met on October 13th. Of course, everything was virtual. Also, a lot of projects they're working on are virtual. They had a nice excursion over to Hort Farms on the 16th. They've been working on their membership, and they've gotten quite close to what they were last year, considering. They had a Tricky Tray at the Bud Lake Firehouse outside in the pavilion on the 24th, last Saturday at 4:00 PM. I haven't had a chance to talk to Liz on how well they did, but they at one point had already sold 175 tickets, and they had over 300 baskets. So I'm sure they did quite well. I also told the president of the PTA to speak to the superintendent about having the meetings back into school because they get less than 25 people at their meeting. So, you know, it's probably better off if they have them. They'll generate more interest than on virtual. And let's see. I think that's about it.
Anybody else? I did not get a chance to attend the San Francisco Home and Partner, but Ms. McFarlane was fortunate enough to share the minutes with me. I'm trying to pull them up right now, and that's not going too well. There we go. They met on the 12th. The president's report spoke to Dr. Zawiki, talked about the staffing COVID plan, 6:12 returning, holiday shop. Dr. Z said on weekends socially distanced. The holiday plans were to be determined. The library will turn into coding. Box tops, no box tops brought to school yet. Coupon book link available on their website. Instead of books mailed to school, everything will be done through the company and shipped directly to purchasers. Spirit wear is still up till November 1st. Pie Baked Good Sale, waiting for the chair to get back with a list of items to sell. Yearbook, live drawing of picture contest submissions are going on. They haven't picked room parents yet. Air B B Field Trips must be booked by November 1st. Working on the holiday plans, virtual material pickup on October 15th, which happened. Outdoor Pitcher Day was a success. November 3rd is 100% virtual for our students, as a reminder. Working on school-wide election for 4th and 5th grade, participating in New Jersey mock election. Treasurer's report, $360 came in from donation from families, fundraising from fall mom sales with $800 profit expenses. Wear $1,100 and face masks, $355 in staff breakfast, and welcome back signs. They adjourned at 7:30, so it was a quick meeting from 7:00 to 7:30. Anyone else? Board President's report, I would like to reiterate to what Dr. Zawiki said about our IT department. Thank you very much. Dr. Zawiki and I spoke at 11:00, 11:30, and then at 3:30, 4:30, and at 5 o'clock again that Monday morning. I do commend Dr. Zawiki for maintaining the plan of bringing all those students back in. And from what I understand, it was overwhelming success from community members, from teachers, and from students about actually not having access to the internet or to devices that really, especially for the sixth graders and the kids at the high school, got them to really touch base with the teachers, that one face-to-face time. Special thanks to the teachers. They had to do double duty. They had to create work for asynchronous virtual students as well. That's great work for the students in front of them as well. So I think it was a total team effort. But again, Dr. Zawiki could have just as easily had said, no, we're going all virtual. That would have been the easy way out. But he stuck to the plan, even though it was a herculean task, and he didn't sleep, and his team didn't sleep. So I just want to thank everyone involved with that and make sure everyone's aware that when he says we didn't sleep, Dr. Zawiki did not sleep. Public comments on action items. 5-1, members of the community may comment on any action item prior to board discussion. Please state your name and address for the record. All comments must be respectfully presented. Abusive or obscene comments will not be tolerated. Ms. Jones, we did not have any email comments from the public prior, did we?
No, we did not.
Okay, thank you. So, action items and actions, people in attendance, please come up to the podium, state your name and address for the record and ask, just on action items. 6-1, all the way down to 9, oh, 9.17. Seeing none, closing the public comments then. Approval of monthly expenditures and reports, Mr. Petrie?
On the recommendation of the superintendent, I moved approval of monthly expenditure reports, 6.1 through 6.8.
I'm sorry, who's second and done?
Mr. Robinson.
Oh, thank you.
Questions or comments from the board? Seeing none, roll call in?
Mr. Petrie?
Yes to everything in 6-1, anything dealing with Verizon, abstain.
Mr. Robinson?
Yes.
Mr. Strelachi?
For 6-1, and then again later on, 7/11, anything dealing with Christopher or Jody Bosch, I abstain, but I'm okay with everything, including Verizon.
Mrs. Aquino?
Yes.
Dr. Gales?
Yes.
Mr. Kemna?
Yes.
And Dr. Giordano?
Yes. Personal action items, Mr. Kemna?
Recommendation superintendent, move personnel, action item 7 dot 1, all the way down to 7 dot 2-2.
Second.
Questions or comments from the board? Seeing none, roll call in?
Mr. Kemna?
Yes.
Mr. Petrie?
Yes.
Mr. Robinson?
Yes.
Mr. Strelachi?
7/11 as noted, yes on everything.
Mrs. Aquino?
Yes.
Dr. Gales?
Yes.
Dr. Giordano?
Yes. Finance, operations, action items. Oh, there you go again, Mr. Kemna. You're the star of the show today.
Recommendation superintendent, move finance and operation action items 8 dot 1 and 8 dot 2.
Second.
Questions or comments from the board? Seeing none, roll call in?
Mr. Kemna?
Yes.
Mr. Petrie?
Yes.
Mr. Robinson?
Yes.
Mr. Strelachi?
Yes.
Mrs. Aquino?
Yes.
Dr. Gales?
Yes.
Dr. Giordano?
Yes. Administrative action items, Mr. Strelachi?
Yes, on the recommendation of the superintendent, I'd like to move 9-1 through 9-17.
Questions or comments from the board? Seeing none, roll call in?
Mr. Strelachi?
Yes.
Mrs. Aquino?
Yes.
Dr. Gales?
Yes.
Mr. Kemna?
Yes.
Mr. Petrie?
Yes.
Mr. Robinson?
Yes.
And Dr. Giordano?
Yes. Old business, members of the Board of Ed may comment on any item on top of this previously discussed by the board prior. Old business?
Just one request.
Yes, sir, Dr. J.
At some point in the next board meeting or next two board meetings, can we get an update on where we stand with the Ed Foundation?
Absolutely.
I'm happy to do it now.
Okay, you can do it now, sure.
So we're still waiting to get our final paperwork back from the IRS, which has been delayed by COVID. We actually have a couple of donations in the hopper. So as soon as that's up and running, we can establish the bank accounts. I've been in constant contact with the Ed Foundation president. We're looking to have a meeting in the next two weeks and to get that up and running. So things were just delayed because of the pandemic, but as soon as that's up and running, we'll let you know, and we look to resume or actually initiate activities. But we do, for the spring, but we do have, we do have some donations in the hopper, which is nice.
And so we need the IRS, I'm assuming for the nonprofit?
So here's what's crazy. So we can accept donations, and that actually would accelerate our application. So what we're trying to do, and, you know, we've had informal inquiries, but if we were to get $5,000 in donations, it would increase, it would move us to the top of the pot.
Why is that?
That's just how it works. Because it's, if you have no money, nothing pending, which would be, which would be tax reportable, they just leave you. But if you get, if you have a check in hand, and we actually have a couple, we have two in hand, and we're looking to have another one, then that would, that would open.
And what's the minimum donation people can make to that foundation?
Minimum, you can donate a penny. A penny up until whatever.
Okay.
And the other thing, too, is the New Jersey Association of Education Foundations, they just got back up and running after the pandemic as well, and I know we're working with them with all that.
Super. Thank you. New business. Any board member with new business? No? That was a water bottle. Sorry, scared me. Public comments, students, parents, employees, and community members may comment on any item of interest pertaining to the Mall of School District. Please state your name and address for the record. All comments must be respectfully presented. Abusive or obscene comments will not be tolerated. 2.1, stand up, state your name and address for the record, and don't ask any question of anything going on in our school district. Ms. Jones, for the record, we did not receive any live feed from the community.
No, we did not.
Any comments, thank you. Closing the public comment. Board comments, board members may comment any interest. I'll start with Mr. Robinson.
Anything of interest? When the hell are we going to get out of this pandemic? It's of interest to me. In eight more days is very much of interest to me, and to our schools, I think. No, it's about it, but.
All right. Mrs. Aquino, your first comments?
Yes, I do, actually. I want to thank Jim and Ryan for all their work getting our internet up and running, but also the teachers and the administrators and the staff for, you know, picking up the pieces and running with it and doing a terrific job. So thank you to all of them.
Mr. Strelachi?
Yeah, I know in the beginning, because of COVID, we were a little bit concerned as to receiving our monies from the town. I hope those have been, those fears have been allayed, okay? One other thing, how are we handling PE?
PE is virtual. We're not doing it, we're not doing it on.
What do they do, calisthenics at home or something?
All types of activities like that. We're using the concept of the WOD, the Workout of the Day. It's streamed K to 5, and it goes through the rotation at the middle school.
It's streamed K to 5 and it goes through the rotation at the middle school and the high school, but yeah, but we're not doing PE on campus.
For those who don't know, WOD is Workout of the Day, it's CrossFit terminology. Ms. Gales, I miss living and myself know that as we are CrossFitters. Dr. Zawicki was a CrossFitter for a day and dropped out.
It was more like two weeks.
And dropped out, so I just want to let everyone know that.
I didn't like throwing up.
Dr. Gales?
Thank you. So, I will try to be as quick as I can. I just wanted to share with the board that the Subcommittee of the Diversity Task Force met on 10/22 and I was proud to be a co-chair with Ms. Marcus and we had a really great meeting, a great group of staff members and community members to kind of spearhead the staff diversity aspect of the Equity Task Force. And so, some of the things that we discussed, we're trying to develop a recruiting plan for January 2021, which would include college fairs, Minority Career Fair, working with NJPSA, NEA and NJASA and local higher ed institutions to develop a pathways program and developing some training to recognize and overcome our biases to create a supportive and inclusive environment for all. And we had some discussion about, some very brief discussion about color consciousness versus color blindness and we shared some resources with each other because we realized that this whole idea of equity and inclusivity is not just about black and white, it encompasses religion and sexual orientation, so I shared the information, I shared a couple of things. One was the anti-bias plan for the next generation, which had some really good information in it about equity and inclusivity and some of the barriers. And also, I attended some of the workshops for the school boards this past week, last week, and one of the presentations was done by a group called Make It Better for Youth and they've developed an entire curriculum geared towards including LGBTQ plus and the contributions of the community in our mosaic, our fabric. And I would encourage those who are interested, their website where you can look at the curriculum as well as lesson plans, it's at teach.lgbtq, which is just a wealth of information regarding lesson plans and so forth. So, we had a really great meeting, Ms. Marcus was a great chair and we look forward to meeting every other Thursday to continue the work. One of the things that we did acknowledge is that this is something that has taken a long time to develop, so the solution is going to take some time, a lot of hard work and actually peeling back some of our own experiences. So, we may enter a realm where some of the conversations may get a little raw, but everybody in the group has agreed to fully participate and engage and contribute and it was such a great meeting. And so I want to thank Mrs. Marcus for that and that is it, sir.
Super, thank you, Dr. Gales. Mr. Kemna?
Yes, also want to thank the IT department, did a yeoman's job, Jim, Ryan, sleep well needed, I guess. The administration, the teachers for pivoting to handle that because the classes were starting, so that was good. And, what an honor, number 33, what are we going to do next year?
31, 31, Mr. Kemna.
31, 31, what do you mean next year?
It's your memory, sir, now.
Well, when you get to a certain age, what are we shooting for next year, 10?
Just taking it day by day.
Day by day?
Day by day.
Congratulations, it couldn't happen without everybody.
We got the internet going.
Yeah, so, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Petrie?
So, the Mountain View Tricky Tray did go off well. My mother-in-law won the TV and we won the...
That means you were the big winner.
You donated it back, you said?
What's that?
You donated it back?
Sure. Second, the IT, the teachers, Ryan, thank you so much for putting in the time. When we had the officers come up a year and a half ago and, you know, there was some concern, I can only speak for Mountain View, but Officer Keith is much more than just a security officer. He is in the fabric of the school, it is tremendously nice to see. I know last year, some kids dressed in Halloween as Officer Keith. He is truly part of the school and not just the big scary guy out front. Good job on Niche 31, hopefully next year 30, at least improvement a little bit, let's not go too crazy. I think I read something where, Dr. Zawicki, you were named District Leader/Advisor for the Future Ready Team. Congratulations on that.
It's a second term.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
And finally, for the people running for the Board of Ed, good luck on the election coming up and that's all I got.
Thank you. Just again, what I said prior to the President's Report, you know, Niche is just super impressive and just, it's not done by one person, I think we've all said that. It's a combination of the superintendent, the board working together, district leadership to school leadership, to our teachers, to our students and our community, I think that's what makes Mall, that's what makes Mall of so great, so it's very, it's a very proud moment for our entire district, so thank you to everyone who made that possible. Here we go. Confidential session, resolved that the board be in confidential session for the purpose of discussing matters of attorney-client privilege and personnel. Be it further resolved that matters discussed in confidential session be disclosed to the public when the reason for confidentiality no longer exists. No action will be taken, we are in closed session. Thank you everyone for coming out. Oh, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We're in closed session. Thank you, Dr. Zawicki.